Okay, it's six o'clock, time to call Mount Pleasant Municipal Planting Commission's order. This time, please stand, I'll have the office do education, John, this place.
We're about to meet this way. Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, so thankful for this blessed day that you've given us this beautiful sunshine. Father, we thank you for bringing us here safely. You did the business of the city. What we ask is, as we go forward in this meeting, Father, that discussions that are had, Father, of a civil manner, and everything that we rule on here tonight will be beneficial to our community and all of the residents here in the city of Mount Pleasant. Thanks for praising Jesus, man.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, approval of attendance?
Make a motion, please, this is.
I have a motion to have a second.
I thought you said I have a second.
No, I'm sorry.
Second, yes, you do.
We have a motion to second. Oh, okay. I, I. The vote, motion carried. Item number four, approval of meetings prior to meeting February 11 of 2020.
I make a motion, we have seven minutes.
I have a motion.
I'll say it.
Second, all over the favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval, passage. Number five, flat approval?
There are none, Chairman.
Number six, rezoning request?
Uh, none.
Seven, annexation request?
There are no annexation requests.
Number eight, site plan approval request?
None.
Number nine, old business, I'll turn this to you, Ross.
Okay. Thank the Board for, uh, commissioners for being here tonight. Um, the first thing that I'd like to cover, review is an update on Sugar Creek final flat, uh, the progress there. Um, we've been working with them hand in hand, engineer. Uh, the last time before the Board, there was a deferral, uh, given by the Board, which allows them sixty days to, you know, bring back documents that, uh, are in compliance with our sub-rags and our zoning regs. Uh, so they actually got to April, our next meeting, um, but we have been in contact, the last time we were in contact, there were several unanswered, um, questions remaining, um, just with the, uh, construction drawings, in and of themselves. And as you know, unless the construction drawings are approved substantially, uh, then the Board, um, we don't review a final flat until those documents are ready, uh, for the work. So that's kind of where we're at. Um, I did, uh, issue a, a letter to them in regards to, you know, our findings and, um, let them know the particulars, uh, that we're kind of looking for, so, um, they are not present tonight, that I know of, and they were notified via email that it would just been updated. So that's what I'm bringing forward, the Board to represent.
So if they're, they're not compliant by our April meeting, they have to start over and do a set of plans.
Yeah, that's, well, they have to, yes, they have to start completely over the process, so, um...
They're on clock now.
They are on clock, that's for sure, yes. And they have been on, uh, ever since our last meeting. There's just, you know, some things, uh, some inverts that, uh, that they miscalculated. Um, you know, there's some things wrong with construction drawings, you can't, it can't happen in the field, so, uh, that's what they're working on right now.
Okay.
And the second item up for old business, if you'd like me to cover that, Chairman, I'll be right there.
That'd be fine, go ahead.
Okay. Um, this is site plan revision. Um, the, uh, Board at our last meeting, um, um, had some requests for, um, the revisions on the site plan, and that was to bring the height, the elevation down to what was already approved in two thousand and ten, I believe, on the original plan, from eight oh eight to seven seventy-six, and that has been shown on the plan. Um, they've identified that, they've brought that elevation down, so the elevation will remain at seven seventy-six, which had already received approval back in two thousand and ten. Um, the next item was to relocate the north, I think it's the northwestern boundary, to ensure that that boundary was no closer to primary runway than the current permitted landfill. That was done, and we'll go over the plan here in just a second. And then the third thing was, uh, Dave, uh, HMR being Dave, um, the applicant, had, uh, asked for the buffer to be allowed to be put on the perimeter of the entirety of the property versus the zoning line there. So, uh, they have relocated that buffer, we gave them approval. Uh, it just made more sense at our last meeting to put it on the outside edge of that property instead of dividing, so, um, they have relocated the buffer to indicate that it's on the outer edge of the property, and of course, we'll see that as well. Um, there was, um, uh, 'cause I don't, I don't know if I got it in front of you or not, but we had, uh, it had been brought to our attention in reference to, uh, a document of, that is via FAA, it's a, it's a FAA document, that, uh, notice of proposed construction authorization. That's been brought, that was brought to my attention, and of course, I don't, I'm not involved with the FAA, so I have no clue, but I do know that our zoning ordinance does say specifically that all local federal regulations, including the FAA, um, as far as their overall risk concern, um, there, there should be compliance there. So, of course, I had a conversation with Mr. Sanchez, uh, email, read, uh, I think initial notification, and Nancy, uh, from Triad, in reference to the documentation. Um, that has since, as of yesterday, uh, been sent certified mail to FAA, and I think it's Fort Worth, I've got the document right here. Um, and that's paperwork that, you know, the FAA would be, um, do whatever they need to do at that point. But as far as, um, the landfill as it stands, um, they are compliant with our zoning regulations, um, as seen in our last meeting, uh, and completely compliant by at least pursuing FAA compliance by sending, uh, that notification to them. So at that point, that would be the FAA's...
So that we have no control of that, anyway, that would be them?
That would be them, but it was just part of our zoning ordinance that, that be reflected and at least, uh, pursuing, uh, that compliance with FAA would have to be notated. So they've made sure that I received that documentation, I forwarded that to y'all in our email earlier. Uh, it, it doesn't, it doesn't take, uh, that it's certified, it was sent out yesterday, so, uh, right now, it's, that's between them and FAA, uh, but they are showing compliance with our zoning regs. Um, and I guess, unless you have a question, we can go to the site plan, kind of show you the difference.
That'd be fine.
Okay. All right, of course, as you see there, um, it's cover sheet there, the existing conditions there at the landfill, existing permitted, the zoning line there that everybody knows is, is, uh, that's where the buffer was first going to go. This is the proposed area expansion, the pink. Um, so as you can see, um, they've actually, that line has actually came down, as indicated, and what our requirements were from our last meeting. So this is actually extended all the way to the line. Uh, so that's been, um, remediated there, and then, I want to show y'all, I'm going to have to blow it up, so, maybe just a second, just trying to get a better view over here real quick, okay, should we go back here? Okay. One more, just blow up the screen, I'll show you where the height, uh, the elevation was actually brought down. Okay. Here, the center of this document, it is the center, even though you can't tell because it's been blown up so much, but the, uh, the midline right there, the, uh, highest elevation is now indicating seven seventy-six, which was the approved height, uh, back in two thousand and ten, that's what was requested of the Planning Commission, um, and, um, they have since changed the plan to indicate that, um, the height increase to eight oh eight, as requested, has been removed, and they've, um, shown that they are bringing it down to the seventy-seven, uh, seven seventy-six. Okay, and then the buffer, I'll just look over here and show you the buffer where it's going to. All right, so, yeah, this is your buffer. All right, I'm going to put that around, just a minute, David. Your paws, uh, just takes a minute, especially with... Okay, so, indicated on this side right here, um, is the requested and approved thirty-foot buffer, uh, which is called out initially right here.
Right.
So the, uh, buffer, uh, here. I take this as...
You're, you go back a few, like, things like slide number two, hopefully three shows it better.
Okay.
Yeah, go back.
Go back one more?
Yes, keep going back. I think it's the second or the third one.
Okay.
I think it's the third one.
Yeah, we're showing coloration, I saw.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll get back to that real quick.
One more.
Okay, first, there we go.
And we had it right here.
So, yeah, I mean, y'all got copies of it right there, and you said coloration, just wanted everybody else to be able to see it as well. Um, yes, thirty-foot, um, buffer, is shown, indicated right here. Of course, that was the plant schedule that we was looking at earlier, so, um, but that's where, um, they relocated the buffer from the middle to the outside.
Is there any discussion?
It's probably a dumb question, but if they ever sold that property, the buffer wouldn't be where it needs to be. I mean, I...
Yeah, if they, if they sold this piece of property over here, you are correct, yes, sir.
Our month...
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. Yeah, if that property, um, I guess was sold by the owner of that buffer, it would be on the outer edge, uh, versus dividing, Dave.
Probably don't see that happening.
Don't, but you know it.
Yeah, it's nothing happens.
Yeah.
Is anybody here to speak on it?
I can go get, uh...
I'll be back.
Step back here.
I'll be back.
Chairman?
Okay. Mr. Lott, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, commission members. This is, uh, I'm here in reference to last month's meeting. I just have a few comments here at first. Uh, I've got a disclaimer. Now, I'm not here representing any group or pack, I'm here as a former Planning Commission member, a concerned citizen, and I try my best to give you good fact-based opinion. Last month, Mr. Roddy talked about, uh, imposing a tariff for dumping into the landfill. We discussed that in two thousand and eleven, but it was understood that if the city takes any monies from that landfill, it could or would make them liable for any problems the landfill could have, pollution, air quality, et cetera, so the city decided not to go that route. Also, when I made mention of the airborne dust coming from the trucks dumping into the landfill, Mr. Grusko politely called me a liar or crazy, he probably meant both. But he commented that he had never seen me on the property. Well, uh, for his information, there are many vantage points in which to monitor landfill activities, I didn't have to be on his property, and I didn't really like that statement in any way, but, you know. I would like to, just quickly, and this, this is important, I, uh, I would like to read to you, in sites and harvesting, this is Mr. Clark Spoden, and it was hand-delivered July nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, in his legal opinion in back, and this is just part of him, but it's, it was a good section. In granting or denying TAP, SSC's application, the Planning Commission's determination must be supported by more than scatia or glimmer of evidence. It must be of a substantial material nature. The material evidence standard requires such relevant evidence as a reasonable mind might accept as adequate to support a rational conclusion, and such as to furnish a reasonable sound basis for the action under consideration. Any decisions that are not supported by substantial or material evidence are arbitrary and capricious. Last, furthermore, the mere beliefs, opinions, and fears of neighborhood residents do not constitute material evidence. In the absence of material evidence, the expression of fears by the members of the community alone, however sincere, will not support the determination of the administrative Board. So let's, let's see if we can satisfy some of his points here. When you read last month's meeting, February eleven, two thousand and twenty, item number eight, owner, TAP, SSC, Hoover Mason Recycling, has submitted a site plan requesting to expand the landfill at seventy-two forty-nine Hoover Mason Road. I'll stop there. There's, they're requesting to expand. Now, when you read that statement, there's a trigger word, request. We all may know what a request is, but let's make sure. If you go to Webster's New Collegiate Dictionary, it says request. The act or an instance of asking for something, something asked for, the condition or fact of being requested, the state of being sought after, also a demand. Now, that's why they were here. They needed your approval to proceed with the project. When the newly formed Planning Commission voted and approved the final development plan, that's another trigger word, final development plan, it contains specific details. So the section two of the final, it says, "The property includes ninety-five point two acres, and the waste disposal area encompasses thirty-nine acres." Period. Uh, there were, uh, there is no comma, no semicolon, or further wording, such as "we reserve the right to expand at a later date," or "we retain the right to expand in the future," nothing, simply a period, the end. That's what they asked for, and that's what they got. Anything that comes after the period is a brand-new project that requires approval from the Board. It starts all over. Mr. Hunter, you asked Mr. Spoden why they didn't ask for the whole track at the time, and that would have been the full ninety-five point two acres. Mr. Spoden's response was, "We were talking about that earlier today, and we don't know, I'm drawing a blank." The only blank Mr. Spoden draws is one that he doesn't want us to talk about. I have two theories as to why they didn't do it. They thought the thirty-nine acres would be sufficient, but the landfill business, I said landfill business, I didn't say landfill business, the landfill business is so good that it's, it's been enough of it. But my real hunch is that it was just too much to ask for at the time. Also, they were out of town. They had, uh, they had to get the vote in, as Mr. Dean talked about, the sixty-day time period, uh, but by the time that we voted no, they had to wait a month, fire us, they had to get their people on the Board, and, and they were basically out of town. Uh, last month, the companies played this off like it was an informational session, and they wanted the Board to know its intentions going forward. Both of those facts are true, but they had to have that vote before they could proceed. The companies, to my knowledge, never stated they had the right to expand, that was a misconception the Planning Commission had. The argument from the Planning Commission was the whole track, ninety-five point two acres, could be used because it was zoned in three. The fact is, I never realized I had this much stuff on this landfill, but you're going to believe it. Uh, I went back and, and pulled through some of the stuff here, and this is the Tennessee Planning Commission handbook. This is the rule book, this is what you go by, and each one of you should have a copy of. And it talks about the, uh, Tennessee Code Annotated. It says, "The statutes delegate very broad authority to cities and counties regarding the substance of local zoning ordinances, with relatively few exemptions or pre-exemptions." Common language in Title thirteen, Chapter seven, permits the regulations of the location, height, bulk, number of stories, and size of buildings and other structures, the percentage of the lot, the percentage of the lot which may be occupied, the size of yards, courts, and other open spaces, the density of population, and the uses of buildings, structures, and land use, or trade, industry, residence, public activities, and other purposes. And down at the bottom, it gives you one example, one of the first key decisions in the United States upholding the validity of zoning was a nineteen twenty decision, and it upheld a nineteen sixteen decision, basically stated, the court said the conduct of an individual and the use of his property may be regulated. Now, that's a small snippet out of the, but if you go, if you go to the Tennessee Code Annotated, here it is. "For the purpose of promoting the public health, safety, morals, convenience, order, prosperity, or general welfare, the Board of Aldermen, Board of Commissioners, or other legislative body of any municipality, by whatever title designated here on, uh, designated as chief legislative body, is empowered in accordance with the conditions and the procedure specified in this part and Part Three of this chapter, to regulate the location, height, bulk, number of stories, size of buildings, and other structures, the percentage of the lot which may be occupied, the size of yards, courts, and other open spaces, the density of population, use of building, uh, uh, let's see, the, the use of buildings, structures, and land, or trade, industry, residence, recreation, public activities, and other purposes identified, areas, uh, where there are added where there are non-existent public and privately owned, and maintain services and facilities when the Planning Commission has determined the services are necessary in order for development to occur." So you've got that. You could have, uh, worked off of that on, as far as that vote, but...
Mr. Thompson, let me ask you a question, I had to interrupt.
Okay.
But, uh, have you ever hired a lawyer to do legal work for you?
You know, back in two thousand and eleven, I think I had two lawsuits against me, I proposed against...
Do you take it to bat? Did you take it to bat that you hired people for?
Mr. Musch, I'm, I'm here trying to make a case. They make their case, we're trying to make our case.
Well, I, I understand what you're trying to say here, we, we've all been through this. I've sat up, I've sat out there and listened to this too, and I'm sure she has, and stuff. But, and it, to, to me right now, and I see what you're trying to do, you're trying to, to reach to us what we should have done. We, we took the advice of the attorney of the city hard, we worked on this thing and worked on this thing to make sure we were doing the right thing here. And right now, it's not going to change anything in here. And you're sitting here telling us, we're not, we didn't do our job properly and stuff. We done what we was advised to do, but legal, but the city has hired and paid here. And it's not going to change the outcome of anything in here tonight. And you're not going to sit here and, and tell us we didn't do our job properly. This, as I said in the previous meeting, this was handed to us.
That's great, right. Well, they all got what they want, so I'm just going to pick up my stuff and go on.
Well, we, I, I told you I'd give you the time, you sit here and telling us what we should have done. We done...
That's what you have to do as a member of the Planning Commission.
We, we could have.
We don't have your information.
We, we could have. But in thirty days, it's, they were going to turn around and sue the city of Mount Pleasant, they were to sue the city of Mount Pleasant.
Their argument also was that it, it, uh, makes zoning requirements, it does not. If you raise zoning requirements, it doesn't even make zoning requirements.
It did not make the zoning requirements when y'all passed it?
I didn't pass it, I got fired.
Well, I mean, the information that you have, we don't have. And, you know, I sit on the other side of the complaint, my brother was one of them that got fired behind you. It passed. And what I was trying to say the last time, you know, that's not open to us anymore, what's open to us is the height, the state of the airport, and for my understanding, this is their land that they're using.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
TM Davis?
I'll pass, thank you.
All right. Item ten, other business?
Uh, there is another business, Chairman.
Item eleven, Board of...
Do you need to vote on that?
No, it's not a voteable issue.
No. It was revisions, it was...
Just in the minutes that was there, right? That's my shirt.
Yeah, there's no vote that is needed on it, because the plan was approved, the conditions were honored.
Just want to make sure, kind of history of...
Yes.
Okay.
Um, there's no Board's comment.
And without our citizens' comment, item thirteen, uh, you're tying a motion for a German.
I get one.
I hear a second, a second. All over the favor. Uh, German?
Please take it down, I'm sorry.
I know, when I reread that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a little random, it's going on.
We'll make sure, kind of a history of...
Yes.
Okay.
Um, there's no board's staff comment.
We have our citizen's comment, number thirteen, uh, in time of motion for a German.
I'll make it most.
I hear a second, a second, all over the favor. Uh, German?
Who's second to that, I'm sorry?
I know, when I reread that.
Yeah.
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 Yeah.
You can't...
I'm just trying to, uh, move around this one, that's where you said it all.
But what can we, how can we...
Thank you all, we know that we're the fathers.
Sorry, I...
The fact is, no, the father, we can't talk about the orders. Not really, it's a new one, so we'll vote on it like, uh, good morning.
I imagine, I'm happy.
Good morning.
I'm happy.
We're going to get to the orders.